I'm gonna call this meeting to order, special meeting of the City of Edinburgh. It's May thirtieth, six P M. by my watch. And I do see that visibly we have a quorum with all of the members of the City Council present. So allow E D C now.
Well, thank you and good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the E D C board to order, and I see that we also have a quorum attending.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody for being here. We're gonna start with our prayer. If everybody could please rise for, I believe, Councilmember Johnny Garcia.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for allowing us to assemble this day here in City Hall, or to continue to conduct leadership meetings, what is in the business just of our citizens. Lord, we ask continued wisdom and guidance in all the decisions that we make, and that we always continue to remember that our citizens come first. Lord, we ask for wisdom and this understanding that we're about to meet together with our E D C division, and that everything comes to fruitful. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna move on to item two on the city agenda, well, joint agenda, certification of public notice.
Yes, sir, Mayor. The meeting was posted in accordance to the Texas Open Meetings Act on May twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three, at four forty-five P M., sir.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. And then item three is disclosure of conflict of interest?
I'm sorry, just to clarify, can, was that the certification date for both agendas, E D C and City Council? Just to make that clear.
I think that was the city one, so I think the E D C certifies theirs. Is that correct?
Yes, we do. Mr. Garza, could you confirm that this has been posted required amount of time? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. So as far as item number three, under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a member or certain persons within that member's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. If the member does have a conflict, they cannot participate or vote on the item. Are there any conflicts disclosed for either the City Council or the E D C board?
No, sir.
Thank you.
No, sir. All right, we're gonna move on. We have public comments, item four.
Yes, sir, Mayor. The Edinburgh City Council allows for a specific portion of the City Council meeting to be dedicated to public comments. Public comments are limited to three minutes. I will be taking time. Please note, the public comment period is not interactive. The City Council may not respond to public comments. The first public comment is firm of clarity regarding item five A, taxpayers' money and our taxes.
Good evening. Talking to this council and the other council is like talking to my boys. If you want them to do something, you have to keep repeating it morning, noon, and night. You have to keep their minds occupied, because if you don't, you never know where they will end up. Y'all think about that for a moment. Remember the joint meeting with the school board? Everyone was excited to build an auditorium? Well, the numbers on the one and far is about thirty-two million dollars with a two million dollar per year for maintenance. Also, all the partners that were out there, they loved the idea of having their name on the building, but contributing to a totally different thing. In the same way, we have to continue to remind you that we are serious about reducing our tax rate. At sixty-four cents, Edinburgh has one of the highest rates in the county, and therefore, we have to remind you again. Adding more floors to a parking garage will not help the downtown, because there is no downtown. The construction of a city-owned parking garage will produce a greater burden on the people of Edinburgh than if it were constructed by the county, because there's a million people in the county and only a hundred in the city. The tax rate for the city residents is two point six cents per one hundred dollars of value. This includes all the taxing bodies. The big question is how much more will be needed to complete the courthouse? No one's working on it right now. It's leaking like a sieve. Assuming that Edinburgh is one of the fastest-growing communities in the county, doesn't that mean there will be more people paying taxes, and we will have, can lower our tax rate because of the new homes and businesses? The city generates revenue by taxing property and publicly owned property, does not generate revenue. Therefore, there will be no money from the parking lot. But there will be additional maintenance and operations, and I also believe security. Who's gonna secure that building? Gonna be a lot of women in there. My question is, how is the six-story parking garage going to improve the economic economy, where the major users will be using the facility five days a week, eight to five, and will not pay for this service? The original construction estimate was ten million. How many floors and how much will it cost? Remember, because employees of the courthouse will be the major users, because like I said, Walmart and everything is away. It's not there. The university is wanting three of the floors. Isn't that wonderful? Who's gonna walk in eighty to a hundred temperature from over there to over here? Tell me that one. And there is no question of crossing the street. One day, someone's gonna say, oh, I, it's too hard to walk across. I get wet. It's raining when it rains and hot. We can't afford a five to ten thousand dollar thing coming across the street. So our question is, look at the courthouse and then think about this garage. It's not open and it's leaking.
Thank you, ma'am.
There are no further comments, Mayor Council.
Mr. Garza, did we have anyone sign up for public comment for the E D C?
No, we did not.
Thank you.
Very well. That being the case, we're gonna move on to the one item we have on our agenda today. And I am gonna have a request that we can keep this to an hour to be mindful of everybody's time today. I know it's gonna be tough, but I know we can do it if we lay it out in the beginning. So this is a presentation, possible action regarding a downtown parking garage needs assessment and economic analysis report by E R O Architects. And before we get started, just for purposes of the community and members of the public, this is a project that has been in the works for some time. I wanna thank the Economic Development Corporation that is a partner with the city. In this case, there's been bonds that have been issued for the construction of this, and I believe sometime last year, we were at a point, I think, the design to where we can probably get started at the time with the three floors. Is that correct? And with the funds that we had at the time. But I think there was some discussion that we had among the council, and I think some of you at the E D C, where if there was a possibility, before we start construction, if we should evaluate, you know, making it bigger based on the needs that are out there. So I think that's what we're here today. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
That assessment has been done, it's been completed, and there's also been a revenue analysis. Is that correct? That has been done. So that's why we're here today, to hear the presentation, and it is here for possible action. I don't anticipate any action. I just think it's for us to get all this information and as we evaluate what we'd like to do. The other thing I'll say is, we do need to get going with one thing or another, because it takes a while, the construction. And so whatever we decide, I would just like to have everybody keep that in mind. So is there anything else? I just wanna make sure, lay all that out for the public. I think it was important we came together jointly so that we can hear the presentation together, so.
Yes, sir. So that we can capture everyone's input, and so that everyone can gather the information and receive the information at the same time. Staff and myself felt that it was important to have this joint meeting, and of course, for public purposes as well, so that we can inform the public as well of the needs and the findings of this analysis. So that is why we're having that meeting tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Madam President, Board Members, Tom Reyna, one of the Assistant City Managers for the City of Edinburgh. We want to present to you our downtown parking garage analysis and the study that we did. We are gonna have the presentation. It's gonna be by Mr. Brian Golinas. He's one of the principals of E R O Architects. So he's gonna be here, and his team is here to answer any questions. As for us, as the city staff, we're hoping that we will receive direction on which avenue to follow, so that way we can continue finalizing our plans and start getting everything ready for the bidding process. Further ado, Mr. Brian Golinas with E R O Architects.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you, Mayor, and City Council Members, and Ms. Gonzalez, and members of the E D C board. What we're going to do is see if we can condense in less than an hour about a hundred-plus pages of a demand and economic analysis study that we presented to the city last week, that we believe was made copies of and sent to each of you, and do it in a series of slides, and some of our experts that we hired to do the study. So I wanna read this statement here, because it's important for the record that I read this. "The study's been provided by E R O and its team of consultants to assist with the development and planning of a new parking garage and retail center in downtown Edinburgh. The data, costs, estimates, assumptions, conclusions, and recommendations are meant for discussion and budgeting purposes and are not final. The report makes assumptions based on current market conditions. There is a lot of data, a lot of assumptions. There was a lot of calculations made and a lot of numbers presented." What we're going to do is present the study in four parts, and I wanna introduce the members of the team that compiled these various elements of the study. So joining me is Diego Leva from K C I, one of the leading engineering firms in the state and country. They're the ones that focused and principally worked on the demand analysis for the parking in the downtown area. Also joining, well, who's not here but is watching the broadcast is Said Malapuri from U T R G V, who did the economic analysis that we presented to you all. And we did it in two versions. We did one with the, with the basis of a construction cost of just a little, under twenty million dollars. And then we did an analysis of construction costs maybe being as high as twenty-five million dollars, and I'll go over that in just a minute. And then thirdly, we invited Carlos Marquez with the Partners Real Estate to do the economic retail performa for the retail space, about sixteen thousand square feet, of what triple net rates and what revenue could be generated over ten years on that portion of the building. And then lastly, I've invited Mark Brock with Americas Holdings, one of the leading developers in public-private partnerships, to do a presentation on the structure and model that if the City of Edinburgh decided to go that route, what would that look like and what would the numbers look like? So as we present each of the sections tonight, we'll stop and ask any questions for each of them, and then we'll move on to the next one. What I'll do is I'll go through the demand assessment. Diego, if you can come join me just to have me here by my side. And then I'll go over the economic analysis in place of Said, who would have presented it, and then I'll have Carlos come up on the retail, and then Mark come up on the P three analysis and structure and model. So with that said, let me give you a quick overview of what we did. So over the last three months, we were engaged to provide this study with the expertise that I mentioned. And we worked with city staff in getting access to data, input, feedback, assistance. We had three review meetings during this process for guidance in terms of going from one level to the next level as we were creating this assessment and final study. We addressed the objectives of the study first, of the demand analysis. We didn't look at the fact that the city was actually engaged in the construction and the process of design of a parking garage. We focused on the downtown area and the need for how many parking stalls over the next ten years would be needed, specifically being a big user potential with the courthouse eventually opens and other, other entities and structures around the downtown area within a quarter mile of the courthouse square. The second objective and third objective was to determine the economic analysis with all the construction costs and all of the revenue potential and the multiplier effects. What would the economic impact be for the city if the garage was built and the parking demand was addressed? And then we looked at the retail space. What would that ten-year performa look like at a triple net rate if the building was fully let out for either food and/or retail tenants in the building? And then lastly, we provided the possibility of the public-private partnership. We looked at the benefits of the partnership, if that was a potential for the city, and given that the revenue generation and impacts that we assumed, what would it look like from a structure and model standpoint to financially be able to do that for the City of Edinburgh? And we looked at that as well. So those four elements are in the study. Let me go through the needs assessment on the demand side for parking in the downtown area. So as I mentioned earlier, we focused on where the parking garage would be, if it is eventually constructed, across the street from the north side of the courthouse. And you can see that highlighted behind me. I apologize for some of the details and some of the images. You'll see they're rather small, but they are in your study. And we did the area of influence for the study to be a quarter mile within that. We thought that a quarter mile was reasonable walking distance from around the square, close to the potential parking garage. We looked at the various structures and/or event sources for the downtown area, starting with the new courthouse, and the potential for traffic flow in and out of the building and the demand for parking there. We looked at the Promenade Park Amphitheater, the new ACE structure that's being, that's gonna be constructed eventually soon, the Museum of South Texas History, downtown special events, and all the analysis and information that we gathered from that, and then commercial business in the downtown area. All of those impacted these numbers. We obtained all the existing parking data from private as well as public. We determined the demand based on that site study that I just mentioned. And then we developed a combined parking demand assessment from all of that for weekday and then weekend. Starting with the courthouse, we looked at the needs assessed from the courthouse. Would need about six hundred and seventy-one parking stalls outside of the courthouse square. Now, there's going to be a small parking lot there, but it's already been designated for jury pool and the DA's office, et cetera. And we thought at one point that they were going to move the temporary court structures that are there on the northwest corner. It looks like they're gonna stay there for a while. So that parking lot, surface lot, is gonna be smaller than what was originally projected. So we looked at the relocation of the Thirteenth Court of Appeals and the need for parking for that, and the available parking from the existing lots that are there now and those that may not be there in the near future. And then the parking spaces that may be available around the roundabout on Highway one oh seven, our University Drive and the courthouse. On the Promenade Amphitheater, a capacity of one thousand seats, we looked and heard and got information that attendance ranges anywhere from five thousand to eight thousand attendees. In some cases, there may be, be over the next few years, events that have over ten thousand attendees. The cultural arts department expects in twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four, eight thousand five hundred attendees annually, with an average of eight thousand attendees per event. Expected to require one thousand three hundred and thirty parking spaces per event. However, parking demand will be reduced to four hundred and fifty on the weekend due to availability of on-street parking and other areas for parking. We looked at the retail space, and what would the retail space, if it was fully functional and was providing full services, how many spaces would be required there? We came up with the demand for fifty-six spaces for the retail space of the new parking garage, if it is constructed. And the combined parking demand, we ended up looking and including from our calculations that six hundred and ninety-five parking stalls over the next ten years would be required, with weekend parking requiring more of four fifteen. So weekday would be closer, over six hundred, and weekend would be a little bit over four hundred. And then for projected growth, based on retail growth and business growth in the downtown area, we added fifty more, fifty-five more parking spaces over the six ninety-five. Ultimately, the demand on the first year with the courthouse, based on the full courts being used, not all of them, but the majority of them being used, would be five hundred and forty-eight. And over the next ten years, the demand conclusion was seven hundred and fifty parking stalls would be required in the downtown area within a quarter mile of the courthouse square, and pretty much within the proposed site for the parking garage. So that's the conclusion of the demand assessment we did on parking. I'll stop here. K C I, they were the ones that worked with E R O and our team on this demand assessment. I'll see if there's any questions on the demand side for parking before I move into the economics.
Does anybody in the council have any questions on this component? And just for the record, this was provided to everybody, so we've had this to review, you know, for a few days, so.
Yes. You have the full study that was submitted last week, and I'm just giving you the very, very condensed version of it through the series of slides. So doing a good job so far?
I have a question for you, Brian.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is making an assumption that the other parking lots that are currently being used, like for the juries and for where other people are parking and associated with the courthouse and surrounding areas, would no longer park there and would park in the garage?
Well, there is gonna be a small parking lot that's going to be ultimately constructed once they demolish the courthouse for jury pool and DA. We don't know if it'll actually fulfill on full use by the jury pools, that most likely they would be using the parking garage. We think the majority of the parking garage is most likely during the weekday going to be from the courthouse. But there will be other demands beyond the courthouse, we think, as well.
But, yeah, so I think you had mentioned, if I remember, and I know it's going very quickly, but you said something about over a thousand spaces, and this would be for seven hundred and fifty is the proposal. So we would assume that some people are still gonna park in other lots, but yet this would take up the majority of the people that need to park, for instance, at the court, from the courthouse business and surrounding businesses.
There are other, there are other parking sources available. You don't have to park at the parking garage if you construct it, to be able to park around the courthouse. The parking garage obviously would make sense in terms of being able, in terms of proximity to park there, but there are some.
And it would free up for use maybe some of those other parking lots that are currently owned by governmental entities.
Governmental entities or private. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any questions from any of the members of the E D C board?
I have a question, Mr. Garcia. So the overall number, that takes into consideration, you subtract, because I see here Eighth Avenue, Ninth Avenue, Tenth Avenue. That, that, all that available parking is considered in that final number?
I'm gonna let Diego come up and answer that.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes, sir. The, the, I think the number right now is six seventy-one needed with seven fifty in ten years. So the six hundred plus are nearly seven hundred parking spots. Is that taken in consideration, the parking that is available from the various streets around? It's a, I think it's a quarter mile, right, you said?
Yeah, so, so the, all the study, the first step was to determine all the utilization around the on-street parking in the quarter mile. So we looked at all the, we surveyed all the area and then find how many parking spots are available. And then we look at the private and public parking lots, how much occupancy we also have on those. So at the end of the day, when we projected the demand, we also subtracted some of that capacity. And so that, that seven fifty is basically after that capacity being used.
That table, it might be hard to see, but that table answers a little bit of the question that you're asking. It's up on the screen right there.
Yeah. Do we have a page?
On the demand, on the study? It's in the executive summary of the demand study. If you look at the executive summary of the demand study, I'll get you to the page. It's on, it's on the first page of Section A. It's about page eleven. If you look at the bottom and look for page eleven, you'll see that table, and I believe that's what Diego is addressing right there. Am I correct?
Yes, so at the end, so.
Let me be sure he's got the table. On page eleven, you'll see a table that's up on the screen and at the bottom of the executive summary. You can see the plus and minus effect.
Yes, so the first row, you have five hundred and forty-eight as the first year, and then we projected three years of the new courthouse, plus one hundred and forty-seven and the additional ten years of commercial and retail. So that's the plus fifty-five, and so the ten-year projection is seven fifty. And then to answer the previous question also, so we looked at, we surveyed the existing on-street parking, actually, two months ago, and all the, all the different public and private parking lots in the area. So when we did the demand, we also subtracted some of that to make sure that this projection, we account for all those available parking before we got to the seven fifty, in ten years.
Yeah, that was my question. But so currently, with the, the available parking around the area, that, that number, six hundred and seventy-one, still stands?
Yes.
And I guess what I was trying to get at is that you are making the assumption that everybody that's parking in the surrounding areas is gonna park in this garage. Is that correct? Based on the numbers that you have here, as to how many spaces are needed, that's because you took all the surrounding areas, parking lots, and private parking, and said, okay, if those people were parking in the garage, then.
No, no, see, that was my question. That, the needs is including people already parking in those areas.
Right. But I'm saying that those people that are already parking there would now park in the garage. No.
They would park there, plus these numbers.
Plus these numbers. Okay.
That's my, that's my question.
And one of the main highlights is the new courthouse. So it's adding, when we look back, it's adding two hundred and twenty-three thousand square feet. We're assuming two hundred and fifty square feet per parking spot, so when you divide all that, so that's how you see that, six seventy-one. So currently, you don't see those six seventy-one, but that part of the projection, when we look at the seven fifty, that's how we estimated it, seven fifty. But we also took into account all the other parking lots being occupied. Some of those were not at a one hundred percent, because they were three blocks away, but most of them were a hundred percent, and that's how we got to the seven fifty.
Yeah, and I have a quick question. Go ahead. Just based on that, so we're not adding new courts, correct? This is all based on the existing courthouse operations. Somebody answer that?
Well, the courthouse has been designed for thirty-one courts.
I guess my, what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is, I understand the assumption of two hundred thousand new square feet, but that operation is currently happening right now. Correct?
In the existing courthouse. Yes.
So.
And they lost that parking lot that was there.
Right.
East of the building. Yes.
Correct. Correct. They're parking somewhere right now. I guess that's my point.
They're parking all around the courthouse.
Right. Right. And areas. I mean, there are areas outside.
Yes.
You know, the, and, but it is a new space, but the courthouse operations continues as it is now.
Yeah. There have been projections that there could be as many as three thousand people going through that building in and out on a daily basis on a weekday.
There's been projections.
That there could be that many people going through the building, on the new courthouse. Yes.
Got it.
Up to.
What is that based on?
The activity of all the courts, when the courts are in full session.
But again, they're the same courts that we have right now.
There's more courts now with the new building.
Well, but aren't they all in the same vicinity or?
Actually, you're gonna have the Thirteenth Court of Appeals now in the building, so there's a lot of consolidation happening into this one courthouse. You have other district courts that are actually external, that are now moving into this one area, so you have a consolidation.
How many of those just, I'm just trying to get a sense, because I understand the assumptions made, but I just wanna make sure, because we're having to figure out, obviously, what, right now's design is what, two hundred and eighty? So we have a big gap here, and, which is why we decided to do this, but the issue here is that we only have so much funding. Right? And the city has already issued, and the E D C, those bonds. And so that's why I'm asking, we're, we should have done this study way before these bonds were issued. That's my point, but that's neither here nor there. It's just, you know, that's why I'm asking to make sure, you know, we're.
So, 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 so just keep in mind, there's a couple of other factors that.
Well, let me introduce it. This is Oscar Garcia, former project manager with Jacobs, who was leading the project management effort for the courthouse until the end of the year. So I just wanna be sure for the record, this is who's speaking here.
So, so just, just a couple of other things. You know, there's the Highway one oh seven project that's gonna have an impact on that. The parking availability that you see around the highway, around Highway one oh seven, you'll be losing some of that parking. So that was also part of the calculation that's involved here. You have other entities like the Thirteenth Court of Appeals that is moving into the building, that that'll bring greater demand of usage of that area. But back to your point, Ms. Gonzalez, you actually, the demand far outweighs what's gonna be available in, in, the total demand far outweighs what's gonna be available in the parking garage. in, the total demand far outweighs what's going to be available in the parking garage. So from a demand analysis study, you're at a much higher than what is being proposed in what you're going to be supplying in that parking garage. So as you go down through this process of looking at the economics and the likes of it, then it'll, it'll flesh out. But, I mean, there's going to be that demand, plus you still have three courtrooms that still haven't fully been, you still have expansion capabilities for up to three more courtrooms. The other thing is, is that all the parking that's going to be available with inside the courthouse square, right now where the parking garage is going to be built, or is planned to be built, is where the jury pool area is, that's going to be moved inside the courthouse square. So none of that's going to be available to public parking. So this, this parking garage is going to be the first available parking for anybody in the public to be able to park in. It's the first location anybody outside of. All of the parking inside the courthouse square is all going to be for county purposes. So, or for jury pool and the like. And some of that's going to be encroached upon because of maintaining some of the buildings that are going to be there.
So Oscar, I know you're from Brownsville, so let me ask you this. There's a Brownsville parking garage that's downtown, next to our new building, E-Bridge. And how many, do you know how many spaces is in that parking garage?
No, ma'am. I don't. Off the top of my head, I don't.
Or occupancy rate in that garage?
Well, we have a little bit. I mean, Said actually did speak to them. And so that's part of the economic analysis. We know they're charging a dollar an hour. And we know that they're typically at 60 to 70% occupancy.
In Brownsville?
Yeah. More or less.
I was gonna say, I've been there many times and I would say less.
Can I ask a quick question? It seems to me that the assessment was truly done for the needs of the courthouse. Would that be a true statement?
No. No, the assessment was done for the needs of the downtown area. It just so happens that a major component of parking needs will come from the courthouse.
Sure, but when you, when you make an assessment eight to five, which is the hours of operation for the courthouse, not taking into account what everything else is possibly open, and granted, there's not much-
There's going to be a driver.
It seems like we're having a discussion, a county discussion or building, and City of Edinburgh coming together to discuss their needs for something that, that truly is gonna probably 98% be used by the county? Would that be, I get retail and I get all that, but truly is being built for the county courthouse?
Well, let me just say, real quick, Mr. Vicente, this is that the, the city, and again, I came into this. I didn't negotiate. I mean, we got elected and then this is kind of one of the first things that fell in our lap. But having said that, I think there's an agreement between the county and the, and the city. So that may be the case largely because the county has needed over the property to the city to build a parking garage. So I think your statement is accurate in that, I think that's, that's what this is. I guess that's part of the city's commitment. And, yeah, maybe to the courthouse, but, but also to our downtown needs as was outlined. But there is an agreement that outlines that.
And I guess, and maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, but where's the, a ride-sharing space and, and things to help for, for what other cities are doing around downtown areas where you have ride-sharing space? Because we don't have enough parking. Do we necessarily have to go up? Can we create where people Uber and, and use Lyft to come in? Which, if I had to use a courthouse, I would Uber in. I wouldn't park. I'll tell you that right now. It's just more convenient and quicker and faster. But is there a rideshare space programmed in here in terms of we take some footage? And so I think that's a miss or an opportunity.
We, we just, we looked at all-
To alleviate.
Yeah, we looked at all the analysis of where people are parking now and where people will park in the future.
Right. That's a forced parking, though.
And I just want to mention that, that the weekday, as it's, as it's displayed here, that the demand was 695, but the weekend demand was 415. So I, I don't want to discount the weekend need based on all of the data we got from all of the different entities hosting events around the downtown area. There is going to be a demand for parking on the weeknights and weekends as well, not just the courthouse during the day. I just want to note that. And there's a potential, based on the retail space, in terms of the needs for the retail portion of the parking garage that you're planning, there's going to be a need for 55 parking stalls over the next 10 years on that small portion of a 16,000 square foot facility.
I, I get that. 55 parking spots for 10 years seems low in terms of the demand? When you put into perspective of 10-year growth.
But we did account for all of the parking availability that's in the downtown area. There, there are parking-
Off-site parking.
Off-site parking that's available in the downtown area.
Sure, absolutely. You, you park basically where you find a spot and, you know, you, you, you go about your-
But, but our study, what, we, we weren't, we weren't engaged to look at how do we deal with the demand? Like rideshares and other programs that may exist. We were, we were asked to determine what would the demand be for parking in the downtown area over the next several years.
But, but I guess there, there are possible circumventions or programs that can help.
Absolutely.
And, and it seems like we haven't looked at that.
Yeah, your parking garage, as it's currently designed, at, at three floors, only addresses, how many? About 275 spaces. At six floors, it's a little over 500. But the demand is greater than that based on our projections.
Yeah, we knew that from the GIN.
So if you're looking at 750 spaces, how many floors are you looking at?
Well, you'd be looking at closer to eight or nine.
Oh, okay. So you're, we're going from three floors, right, that we had originally planned for, to eight or nine at this point to meet the demand?
That's not our decision. I mean, that's, that's up to what the city council decides.
But I mean, if you're suggesting 750 and needs of 750, you're talking eight or nine floors.
Yes, but that comes with a lot of challenge. Structural challenge, noise vibration challenge. It would not be the recommendation of the study to say, go out and build an eight or nine-story garage.
You're just simply stating what the needs are.
We're just simply stating the needs. We, we made the assumption that there was no parking garage being built. This is still the need and demand.
Okay.
Well, just to be mindful of everybody's time, we're getting along to the next section. So we're just in the first one. Let's go to the next section. We'll give everybody an opportunity to ask questions, so.
All right, so Said could not be here. He is in India and won't be back for another three weeks. So I'm going to just highlight his analysis. But in the demand study, there are several pages of his methodology and his calculations to determine the headlines. As I mentioned in the agenda, we did two, we did two economic analyses based on two different construction costs. The first one was at close to $20 million, 19.4 in construction cost, which is what is currently, what, what in the design phase of the project. That's the current construction cost estimate. And with that, based on that construction cost, projecting 51 jobs, the parking garage, three, the food court, 18, retail spaces, 30, and looking at a $1 per hour per parking stall at 65% occupancy. And in your package, there are many scenarios where it goes from 100% occupancy to much less than that, going from $1 to $5. But we went ahead and conservatively approached the middle at 65% occupancy, $1 per hour, that the city could generate a little over $1 million in revenue based on that. And then the overall economic impact to the region, 34.6 million supporting 302 jobs, 11 million in labor income, 5.3 million in the local economy to Edinburgh, 14.9 million to the GDP, and 1.5 million in state and local sales taxes. This was ultimately the final conclusion of the analysis on the economic side. As I said in your study, there's a tremendous amount of documentation on how UTRGV led by Said came up with that. And then if the construction cost got to $25 million, the jobs still stayed the same. The revenue projections, again, if you just double the revenue to $2 per, per space at 65% occupancy, you could generate over $2 million in revenue. But we chose this route instead to present for these numbers. These numbers will have a bearing in just a minute on some other economic analyses. The total impact to the region would be 42.8 million. The jobs would increase to 363, the labor income to 13.3. The local economy would stay the same at 5.3, 18.2 million on the GDP, 1.8 million in state and local sales tax. So 19 million in construction with all the various economic elements is an impact of 34.6 million. And then with $25 million in construction, it jumps to 42.8 million. This is the economic analysis conclusion on this phase that the university did.
Over what time period? Is this a 10-year?
10-year.
10-year.
Anybody have any questions on this component?
How are you receiving the support of 363 jobs? How are you calculating that?
Well, you can see right there in the employment of the direct, indirect and induced, and then the total effect. That was calculated by the university. I can't talk about the methodology that was used on that. Unfortunately, Said is not here, and we were hoping to patch him in through Zoom, but it didn't work out. But I can just tell you that based on direct, indirect and induced on the project in terms of what it can do, that's where the numbers came from on the jobs.
They, they plug the information in into a data, there's a certain program and it'll tell you how many jobs are expected based on like surrounding areas, if you're going to have retail there, whatever. That's how they end up looking at the numbers and, and kind of determining. That's what the program does.
I guess probably the follow-up on Jason's question is that, on top of the jobs that are already there? If we don't build a parking lot, the courthouse still going to employ the people house? If we don't build the parking, same people can work at the DA's office, same people can work here. So is that 363 jobs on top of what's already there? I think that's, question you're headed for.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think, I think, Jason, the way it is, is, is by bringing that parking here, it's going to spark economic development of retail, gas, restaurants. And that expenditure supports that number of jobs when you look at the overall picture.
There'll be direct impact from the construction and then indirect impact based on once the building's built.
Not, not what's sitting there now, but the, the influx of the traffic and the concentration in this area will create, because they have to eat, they have to spend money on gas, they have to, and that, that trickles down into job creation and it supports that.
The building just spurs the growth, in essence, and creates the jobs.
And I, I kind of, I think I know where you're headed to this, too. I don't see, they're coming here anyways. It's kind of like a closed market to go to the courthouse. Kind of have to go. So I don't see how 363 jobs will be created. I don't see how many jobs. It's got to be a lesser number than that, just by, just by adding parking. If it was adding a new business, we're adding new function over there. I just, I just, I just don't see that number.
Yeah, the parking will spur more businesses to downtown, because now you have an area-
Doesn't talk that.
Well, the construction alone is going to, is going to provide quite a bit of jobs. But that is going to have a direct impact that'll eventually fade after the construction goes. But those numbers are in here.
Those are short, those are short-term, short-term.
Those are short-term jobs.
I have a different question. It talks about the revenue side, but it doesn't talk about the expenditure side unless I missed it. What's the maintenance cost once you build the facility?
You, you mean the, the maintenance and operations for the city to run it or a third-party operator?
Yes.
We had a discussion about that. Does anybody remember that one? I, again, unfortunately Said is not here to answer that. I, I don't have the answer to that. But I know that there was a calculation for it in terms of what the cost would be for that. I just don't recall what that number was on an annual basis for the MNO.
Do you recall if it was in a negative or positive?
You mean against revenue? It, it was, it was positive. Your, your, your cash flow on this project, if you built the garage and generated the revenues we're talking about, this, this project will pay for itself within five or six years.
Sort of broke even?
For what?
It would break even or?
It, it should break even within five or six years. Based on the revenue generated from the parking revenue and the retail tenant leases, which we'll go over here in just a second. But this project has a break-even point within five to six years. That's including the MNO. The MNO was factored in that for that break-even analysis.
All right, there's no other questions. We're going to move on to the next section.
I can. All right, so I'm going to bring up Carlos Marquez with the partners to talk about the retail lease and development analysis that they did.
Good evening. I was asked to prepare a pro forma underwriting analysis for a retail center, 16,850 square feet. Again, this analysis is an analysis that, that we usually do for any real estate developer. So the first question a real estate developer comes to us and asks is, does this pencil out? And that's the intent of this analysis. Will it pencil out? Are we making a profit? Is it economically and feasible based on the cost and the revenue projections? So just high level, it's 16,850. There's a good mix of tenants. Not all of them would be restaurants. There will be a concentration in the food court. The remaining six spaces could be used for retail, commercial services or additional restaurants. There is that flexibility to accommodate both needs. And again, this will be based on tenant demand once, once the facility is complete. I have a, just a projected start, start date. It does take quite a bit of time to build these projects. So as a developer, you need to be prepared to pay for some, some of that construction interest during that time period. So the market rents, that's what everyone cares about. It's, we use $20 per square foot per year. Again, we went with a conservative number. If you go out and look in the market, you will see some higher rates on, on retail space. But again, for this analysis, we try to use what, what is a real deal number? Where are tenants signing a lease, rather than what are we going to ask for in the project? So based on just a competitive analysis we did in the general area, $20 is a good, good number to use for this study. The operating expenses are just under $5 a foot. Again, that is based on comparable properties in the market. The tenant improvements, again, if you go and look at space today, a good number is $20 per square foot. This analysis considers $25. Again, it's, a tenant is likely going to ask for a little bit more. It includes leasing commissions. It includes rental escalations. Rental escalations are, are not keeping up with inflation, but they're staying pretty close to it. So that, that's this first page. Again, the financing component, again, this cost is really associated for the retail component only. This is not for the total project cost. So again, we, we did this analysis as if this was a standalone retail project, could it sustain itself? The next page, you will see the cash flow projections. Again, on the cash flow, it, it does take a 5% vacancy reserve. You have your gross revenue, what you're charging your tenant, you take away a 5% vacancy rate reserve. That'll give you your, your base rental. Additionally, tenants will pay property taxes, insurance, maintenance, and even a property management fee. All that would be reimbursed. This is a triple net lease. Again, these, this study is, is meant for, to get to a net operating income. That, that's the difference between the, the total revenue that's received versus NOI. So the NOI in year one is 320,000. I think what the report concluded, the average NOI is 351,000 over the term of five years. The, the last component of this is debt financing. Again, this is just based on the standalone project of 3.6 million. And again, the project does cash flow.
Carlos, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
On the base shell cost, you're talking about $140 a square foot. Does that above the structure itself, because you already have a structure?
Again, I took as if it was an independent structure without taking anything into account for the additional floors.
It's just like a snapshot of this amount of square feet in a particular area with, is the cost, this is a-
Correct. And that $140 is just-
So maybe less, I guess to Rudolph's point, I mean, we already have a structure there, so, yeah.
You will have economies of scale on the soft costs. Again, I put everything from architects in there, which is already covered by the- So again, that's why this, these numbers are very conservative. I mean, the hope is it will exceed expectations.
Yeah, that, I just, that was the point that I was trying to make, because those are very conservative numbers in terms of you already have a structure there and you're adding to it, so you're actually double counting some of this stuff.
Absolutely right. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions on the analysis? Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm going to bring up Mark Brock with Americas Holdings. They're one of the preeminent public-private partnership developers in the country and to talk about what the structure model might look like if the city decided to go that route. So with that, I'm going to bring Mark up.
Thank you all for letting me speak and take this opportunity. Again, like Brian said, I'm Mark Brock with Americas Holdings out of Houston. We are delivering, are using the P3 methodology on a couple of projects right now. A jail and justice center, an arena. And in the recent past, we delivered the A&amp;M Hotel and Conference Center Garage under the P3 method. delivered the A and M Hotel and Conference Center Garage under the P3 method. I will disclose, I was on the A and M side when Americas developed the parking garage. So just full disclosure, I've been on both the private and the public side. So kind of know how both sides work and the needs of both sides. So just for disclosure on that. What is a, what is a P3? Like I said, just for the sake of time, really the first bullet answers that. It, it's a collaborative effort between the public and private sectors to deliver a project, in this case, a garage, on time and on budget. I'll go on to the next page. Like I said, it is a partnership and, you know, a lot of people think, or not a lot, some people think. Okay, all right, thank you. I'm not a computer literate person, but yeah. It's a very transparent process. I, I know that, that P3 sometimes has a negative connotation out in the market. You know, it's a developer coming in and it's not transparent. I can assure you, it is very transparent. Everything is run through the, the government entity, in this case, the city. You see all the numbers, you see the draws, so it is a very transparent process. And the end result is to make sure that the city, in this case, is happy with the product that we deliver in an effective way. I'll, I'll, the, the next page, the deal. The deal lifecycle, very busy page. I, I will say that it, it is comforting to know y'all have done a lot of the due diligence. A lot of times we will go into a city, county, and they haven't done anywhere near what the city of Edinburgh has done. So I, I do commend you on that. These discussions tonight that we're having, I've been in these before. These are very productive discussions because the entity has to decide what the need is, then how are we gonna finance it? That's the P3 model. So just briefly on the procurement, the next phase, once you guys get through this, would be to issue an RFQ, RFP. To, to be clear on that, the, the city is not obligated. If, if you issue the RFP and you get proposals on that, what we would do as a P3 developer, if we were selected, would come, come in and look at these studies that have been prepared. We would offer our services. One of the guys on our, in our company was a former city manager, so he can put together capital plans if that's needed and, and really underwrite the, the need, the financial capability. He can put all that together. That's just something we offer. But if, if the city decides after the presentations of the, of the respondents, this is not the direction we want to go, then there's no harm, no foul. We, we, everybody just moves their separate ways. So I just wanted to bring that up. Really, here's the page, here's the page that I, I, I think is important. And I'll just briefly, we bring the expertise and resources. We would bring a parking operator if the city elected to go third-party. We bring the, the design team, just the development team that has that expertise and resources. Workforce development, what that means, we would just basically supplement the city's staff. Some cities, maybe like City of Edinburgh, are capable and have that staff. We would work together and supplement that staff where needed. Risk mitigation, we guarantee, we would come to the city with a guaranteed maximum price, meaning if there are any overruns, that's on us. We are responsible for any of the cost overruns. So you shift the risk from the city over to the developer, us. Faster project delivery, this one's a little different. The city, y'all are into DDs and CDs, so y'all are down the road. But we could help and would help speed up that delivery process just by working with the team here. Innovation and technology, honestly, don't really know what that is. I, I do know on the A and M parking garage, we wanted to put in the latest and greatest, the fancy lights you see when you go into the garage if it's vacant. Maybe that's, I'm not sure who put that in here, but.
Nathan.
Oh, Nathan did, okay. Financial flexibility. Here's, here's why a lot of cities and counties and higher ed use this. It, it, it's a financing vehicle that frees up capital that that entity could use for other projects. They can take funds to pay their lease payment out of, say, the M and O and just free up the INS for other projects, courthouses, infrastructure, and instead of using all of their capital for one project, it allows freer use of your monies for other needed projects in the city. Cost savings, again, we go out and with the GMP, we do go out and bid these and we'll competitively bid it and make sure that the city is getting the best price that they can get. And we share all that with the city. We share all the bids, so it, it's an open book policy. I kind of went through it pretty quick. I'm sure there's some questions.
Well, just real quick on that. So thank you for being here. We appreciate that. And thank you all for, everybody you have, because I think that's a very, provides a lot of information to us. So have you, you seen these reports, sir, just real quick, that have been generated? Have you looked through them?
I've looked through them.
Okay.
I can just be honest with you, I have not studied them in detail.
It's okay. No, I understand. I was just curious to get your thoughts if this is a project a firm like yours would, would pursue, given where we're at in this stage of the process.
Good question. We would come in and take these reports and do a deeper dive.
Right.
We, we have, have done work with, with Walter P. Moore out of Houston, have that contact. Probably would go with the, engage the guy at the A and M system. He is the parking guru to be on our team to, to do just that.
Okay.
And analyze this in a more detailed fashion.
And in general, not to try to put you in the spot or anything, but just so that, I mean, you understand, so this property has been conveyed to the city by the county for the purpose of building this parking garage? Just the little that I know in P3s and all that, a lot of it has to do controlling the property. So that wouldn't be the case here. Would that be an issue to pursue a P3 in this project?
No. So we, we would ground lease it, again, and we would go through and present this to city council.
And this is just to get an idea. I'm not trying to, I mean, I.
Yeah.
Obviously, to fairly consider this. I'm just wanting to get a sense of.
So we would ground lease it. You'd, well, the city would ground lease it to a nonprofit. And that's the conduit that makes the debt service payments.
And that's what I need to make sure, I guess, legally our city attorney, and that's what I had asked, are we even able to do that? Because, so you would require, as an example, for this property to be ground leased?
Yes.
Okay. In other words, it couldn't stay in the name of the city to pursue a partnership?
We've done that. We've done that in Fort Bend County. It can be done. It's a simpler process if it's ground leased, but we can, we've done that and just recently did that.
And I asked our city attorney, are we, does our agreement allow us to do that? And I'm just, I don't want to waste anybody's time, or I just want to make sure we're open about this.
Yeah, the city would have to retain ownership of the property.
We would. So we wouldn't be able to ground lease it at all?
Uh, well, leasing, yes, but conveying, the city would not be able to do that.
Oh, so we could lease? Okay, all right.
Yeah, conveying, so after, obviously after the ground lease or the debt's paid off, it reverts back to, to the city, is how we would structure that.
All right.
Yeah.
I just know that's a key part of these structures. I will make sure we can even entertain it, so, okay.
So, the next page, financial P3 structure. So we've taken the estimated cost of this at twenty-eight million and basically running that through the model at today's rates, and what we've added in here is two years of cap I, basically debt service reserves, to pay for debt service until the parking garage is built and stabilized. And so we've added that in here. So basically, the payment would be about two million a year in lease pain, in a lease payment. And again, Brian, you can maybe speak to, that will be offset to a good degree based on these studies. I think it was a million six.
One point one million on the, at sixty-five percent occupancy, a dollar per hour rate for the parking and about an average of three hundred and four thousand dollars a year on the tenant lease revenue that can be generated, created a delta of six hundred and forty thousand dollars.
So based on that, the last bullet, there, there would be about a six hundred and forty thousand annual subsidy that would needed, would be needed from other city resources to cover the debt service payment. And that type of analysis would be part of, when we brought in the financial team, what other sources are available, if any?
So in this case, just, and again, I know this is just for illustration purposes, but this would be issued by who? Or this, on the cost, on the financing, that's where the P3 comes in?
Correct.
And, and we took the worst-case scenario, or Nathan, when he did the calculations, that if you went more floors to deal with the demand today as opposed to ten years from now, we took it up to twenty-eight million dollars, even though it's, the cost estimate is hovering a little around twenty million right now.
Right. But I guess what I'm trying to say is.
Who issues? Is that who issues the debt?
Right.
So I can give you, and we probably should have put, I have a, a chart that shows the development side and the financing side. It would be a 501(c)(3), a nonprofit.
Right.
That would issue that debt. The, the monies from the city would, the debt service payment would come into that nonprofit. That nonprofit would then submit those payments to the bondholders. We would go out and sell bonds.
And so who would back up these, this bond?
The city.
Okay. And are, are, what kind of bonds are we talking about?
Uh, they are, they're basically revenue bonds, but it's backed, that's, I'm glad you brought that up. It is backed by the credit of the city of Edinburgh.
All right.
Yes, and I'm glad you mentioned that. That's a good point.
Yeah, I know. Okay. All right. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you for that. I mean, I, I appreciate the information. It's very helpful to take into consideration. I will be honest, I wish this was presented maybe when we first got elected so that we could have looked at this and, that was a year and a half ago. But we're here now, and I'm sorry to have to say that. It's just, it is a little, I will admit, I, I just, we should have done this assessment before the bonds were issued, but anyway.
I will offer to anyone, we have a, like a ten-page little brochure that explains.
All right. No, and this is very.
The financing.
Very helpful.
Goes into more deep, okay.
Definitely.
We just wanted to present this as a possible path for the city.
Of course. No, absolutely. Thank you.
So in conclusion, you have a baseline that's established, and the baseline that's been established is that there's a need for seven hundred and fifty parking spaces over the next ten years. The economic analysis from a conservative viewpoint at a dollar per hour at sixty-five percent occupancy, if you did construct a parking garage that had the capacity of close to a little over five hundred spaces, generate one million dollars. You have retail space that could generate three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars on an average, on an annual basis. And your delta, if you went the P3 route, would be six hundred and forty thousand dollars against the revenue from the parking garage and the retail rate. I will note that it would be up to the city to decide if you wanted to go to two dollars an hour, or if you wanted to do free parking on weekends and do two dollars an hour on weekdays. And the occupancy might be from sixty-five to seventy-five percent. So the delta can vary based on that. And that is our presentation. We have any other questions that we can answer?
First of all, I really appreciate, this is very in-depth analysis. We, I mean, very helpful information that, I will say, I'm not sure what the decision, decision is gonna be made on what we do moving forward related to the parking garage, but I will tell you, it is a public document, so we will use it to help with other businesses in our downtown, because this is very good information that, that I think we can have. So I did want to ask the administration, is there any thoughts, feedback? Since we're already at the one-hour mark, but, you know, we did pretty good, by the way.
Yes, I just want to thank the presenters that came tonight to give us this information. It is a wealth of information for us to take into consideration for council and EDC as well. I know there is a need for these parking spaces, but we'll definitely, of course, it's up to the council and, and the direction of EDC to see how they're going to move forward. So I just want to tell you thank you so much.
I know, I know that on the page that they sold, retail space analyst, and have y'all thought about some type of advertisement opportunities for businesses on the parking garage that could bring in extra streams of revenue?
We, we didn't, the study objective was not to look at how we could generate the revenue, was what the potential revenue based on certain calculations. I mean, there's a lot of different ways. I don't know if Carlos wants to say anything about that, but our study was strictly just on the numbers, not on the marketing side.
Anybody on council has anything? There's a lot of information. And by the way, thank you for providing this ahead of time. We were, over Memorial Weekend, had a lot of good reading material with us. But it, it's very helpful and, and definitely gonna take this into consideration as we move forward. So anybody?
And just, just real quick, Mayor, I'd like to mention for the public, this is on our city's website.
Okay, great.
And so if anybody in the public would like to review the information that is being provided this evening, it is available to them.
Perfect.
So if anyone has any questions or council or any of the board or anyone else would like to refer back to it as well.
Are we gonna have this at our next city meeting as an item for us to at least discuss further? Or, you know, I'm asking just in case for follow-up?
At this time, we did provide a possible action to see if there was anything or that the council or the board would like to, to give us direction in moving forward, unless it is the council's wish. At this time, we were not going to be presenting it in another council meeting.
And then I guess the EDC, I don't know if there's any feedback?
I, I would, I would just like to say, I guess in general to our, to our public, curious why we're looking at a parking garage, why the city of Edinburgh is looking into a parking garage. We are, part of the consideration that we're looking into, the courthouse is there. The courthouse is gonna be there and is going. We are gonna have additional seven hundred, but they're projecting another seven hundred and fifty additional cars coming to our area. If we don't do something to it, they end up in our neighborhoods and they end up down the street because they have to come to the courthouse. So part of the reason that we as a city find interest in parking is part of our whole taking care of, our community caretaker position that, that we have, is that the, they're gonna attract seven hundred and fifty additional vehicles in the thousand that we get already today, and we've got to do something with them. And on the former law enforcement side, is that you're just gonna end up in our city streets, they're gonna end up in our corners, they're gonna end up illegally parked because they have to be here. You're gonna end up at the university and the university's gonna have the issue, somebody's gonna have the issue. And that's just the fact of life that we're going with. And that was mainly for the, the public.
Yeah.
Information of why the city of Edinburgh is looking at spending money to park cars.
Yeah, and, and, and I want to piggyback on what Chief is saying and maybe other people who have more information on this, but thank you for the, the law enforcement side of things. So what would happen is, you know this was happening, you know these cars were coming. What did you do, city of Edinburgh? Even though we want to say it's a county issue because of the courthouse, I, I think it, it's, it's fair to be said that in the development of the county courthouse, before any of us were any, on any of these boards, there was a commitment by the city of a certain amount of money, I think it was like thirty million dollars, that the city would have to somehow other participate with the courthouse. And I think that there was some sort of an arrangement that they wouldn't participate if they did something about the parking. And as time went on, if anybody else wants to chime in on that, but that's, 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 I remember that when we first spoke about it in the EDC, even though parking is a, a county courthouse issue, it's in the city of Edinburgh. And the city of Edinburgh is the one that takes the brunt of not providing the parking. And I think somewhere or other, there was some sort of handshake or gentleman's agreement that the city would not be on the hook for thirty million if they would do a parking or have a solution for parking. And this was, you know, years before. But if anyone has any information on that, please, please chime in. But to the mayor's point, I know that those of us that were in the EDC back then, there was a, a proposal on a three-story parking garage. And the first time that I heard of a number was when we went to do a walk-through, Mr. Garcia was the first time I met him. And that was, the whole reason I went that day was to ask, how many parking spots do you need? I remember that day was about two hundred and eighty. And then we were already above what the three floors was gonna have. And that's the first time that we had an inkling that, hey, we might need to look at this further. It would have been ideal if we could have done that way back when. The only improvement we made is to plan for a, the foundation to be six stories, because initially it was only gonna be three stories, in case we were able to, to add more floors. But that brings up another question. So if we go with the projected three stories, I keep hearing that we cannot add floors after the initial build because of some sort of restrictions, historic.
build, because of some sort of restrictions, historic buildings, does anybody wanna touch on that?
Eli's here, Eli, did you wanna talk about that part?
Sure.
I, I know you're very aware about that.
Because.
I wasn't dressed for that.
Well, Eli's a top architect.
Yeah, because on.
I know you were here.
Yeah, on council side, and EDC side, we're saying, hey, well, let's build it three stories, and as needs arise, we can go up, because the foundation is good for six stories as is, but I've, I've heard that if we don't build it now, we won't be able to build it anymore.
It's a logistical issue, and we would have to shut down the existing parking garage so we could add the floors up on top, we'd have to see how we could block off two eighty-one, which is gonna require requests from Tech dot, we do get into other issues as far as, from an engineering side, as far as what kind of vibrations do we set off, which could possibly damage other, other buildings in the area, because when the buildings synchronize their frequencies, it's when you start getting cracks and things of that nature, so in looking at all those different options, we said, look, we, we can do it three stories and then add, but then there's a lot of logistical things that would have to be overcome, that may not be able to be overcome, Tech dot, for instance, may not allow us to close down two eighty-one, because it's gonna take a while, and then the time that it's gonna take, it'd be closed down for close to a year, if not a little bit more, so the time to build it is now, now, there was a question that I, if y'all don't mind me indulging in this, the county, when we first started this, had twenty-four courts, but only twenty of them were located here on the site, okay, we have seven stories, five of which hold six courts apiece, they're all taken up, so that's already thirty courts, because the county's been growing, okay, we also added two additional courts on what we call the third-floor bump out, so now it's thirty-two courts, so you're actually going from twenty-one courts on the site to thirty-two courts on the site, the other thing that was mentioned was the Court of Appeals, Court of Appeals right now is currently across the street in the, in the, uh, the other, the NX building, okay, what's gonna end up happening is they're moving into this, so basically, you're moving the same parking spaces over, but now you're freeing up a lot of space for more office space that the county's gonna need, so the county's gonna be bringing in more people to occupy that space, so it is a burgeoning number of parking spaces, the other thing that, that I, I just wanted to clarify, the seven fifty was in addition to what's existing right now, whether it's on the street, whether it's at Shady Grove, or any of the other adjacent parking spaces, so there's a demand for it, and it's gonna come, it doesn't mean you have to build parking garage for all seven hundred and fifty, you could do three stories, bearing in mind that you would be falling short about four hundred parking spaces over time, which then, somewhere at that point, you may end up having to add a parking garage in another location to start making up for it, but the numbers, when we were first looking at how many people would be accessing the courthouse on any given day, was anywhere from three to four thousand people, keep in mind now that the county clerk is there, so all the records for all the county now are held here, in that one office, which is gonna bring just regular general public demand to the area, and so, there's a big demand, that's all I could say, and then, now coupled with what's going on with the ACE, and the amphitheater and all that, I mean, you've seen, y'all have had some very successful projects there, so it, it, it's all cumulative, and it all adds up, but my recommendation as an architect and a structural engineer, build it now, if you can, if you wanna stay there, because you could build satellite parking, and there's benefits to that, you may wanna think about that, too, but it's always gonna be harder to, to add on to that particular space in that location.
Thank you, and it reminds me of the, the interchange, as we see the, the lanes being constructed now that wasn't planned for when we were, when it was first being built, but, but, you know, it's always about money, unfortunately, right?
Absolutely.
And so, Myra, would you remind us, how much was the bond that we went out for? How much did we get in bonds?
Seven and three, a total of ten.
A total of ten, okay, and this project for, for the seven hundred and fifty spots would es- be estimated at twenty-eight million, from what I understand, right? You know how the public is about bonds, so, that's why I think it's a matter of trying to figure out how to make the numbers work.
And I believe that's a reason for a P three option.
A P three option.
Something that would help, help you with that.
Yeah.
And here I was intending to be a fly on the wall.
Thank you. So I wanna thank Mr. Ochoa for providing that information, of course, for council member Diaz for asking the question, because staff will eventually have to know what direction we move forward, as we know, the cost of construction keeps rising daily, and so I think it's important that, that maybe we have some sort of direction from the board and from council at some point.
Yeah, so I would request that we place this on the next council meeting.
Yes, sir.
So that we can discuss it further, if possible, at least for us, and I know the EDC needs to as well, whenever they meet again.
Yeah, we have a meeting coming up on Monday, do we not, on the fifth?
If you all want it.
I thought we had already, it was on the calendar, so I think we should add this to executive, thank you for that, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you. I just, just for me, I'm, I'm, I just wanna make sure, so, I know it was mentioned ten million, but at some point, I'm going through notes in my head, wasn't there seven million dollars to EDC set aside for the, and if that's correct, was it for the retail space, and then the, there was seven million dollars, no?
That was for the ACE, ACE Center.
Was it?
Yeah, I think.
Okay, seven and seven more for the ACE Center, it was fourteen million.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, there's no other questions, again, thank you, everybody, for the information and presentation, again, very good information, and definitely, we're gonna use that to decide what we're gonna do next, so thank you all very much, and if there's no other questions, there's executive here, but we don't have any executive items, I'll just ask for motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, please raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, the city council is adjourned.
Okay, for the EDC, may I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye, or raise your right hand, okay, we are adjourned, thank you.